Are these digital sessions are usable after the meeting?
Yeah, on YouTube.
On YouTube? Well, who would have thought? Okay.
We have some high-tech people.
Wow.
Is Mark on yet?
So how many, how many meetings that you chronicled already?
They went back quite a ways.
A while, a while.
Yeah, they're missing a couple.
Okay.
Because they weren't in town.
Technical difficulties.
So there's a couple, one, at least one missing, but there might be two.
Is it town meetings or just selectmen's meetings? Okay.
Town meetings, I think, are available on Channel 7, but I'm not sure how you get them. They need YouTube also, but I'm not sure.
Mike, can you hear us okay?
Mark is the one that runs the, our equipment for Channel 7.
Channel 7 is what, a cable station?
Yes.
We have our own TV station. Yes, I'm sans cable, so doesn't matter.
If, if you have.
I can get YouTube, but it's spectrum.
Spectrum, yeah.
No, I don't.
You'd be, if you did, you'd get a Sony TV.
That's not true. I have spectrum, but I don't have cable TV.
Right, that's true.
Right, I have too, and I don't.
I have internet on.
Yeah. Castle Island was one of the things that began. You're in for anything particular? Great. Oh, sure, sure, okay. I like the hassle of that, right? Love the dogs. There is a copy of a letter that we got from Efficiently Made. People press and pull, can do it to. What they have available. That's a great. A lot of stuff out there, but it's just much time here. Yeah, efficiency made.
Interesting. Wonder if the generator would be eligible.
Be worth talking about, yeah.
That would be nice.
Lighting projects, food stations, fire. I would take.
You want me to look into that?
Be great. Triglycerin system.
That's just from municipalities.
Yep.
Some of the municipality have refrigeration.
We have the community centers.
They happen to have a skating rink.
I would think the T-Pumps will want to do that too. Or heating. System.
Did Mark answer you?
Yeah.
Oh, he did?
He did.
He's there.
He's there. He's ready. He's on it.
This is funny, I think I should have. They need to have the. Clean the bathroom.
Okay, yeah. Okay, we can do that.
He was thinking more Julie Banter. Well, keep up our appearances.
Funny how we don't have any comments anymore.
No.
Couple minutes.
We need a NASA countdown or something like that. A NASA countdown.
Yeah.
Not to discuss that more smoothly from most recent launches.
No kidding.
Did Pat say she was coming in?
Pat?
Pat Rosson? You don't.
No, I don't know that she is. I know Jayden Rogers is. She's for the CPC thing. Oh, about the AGN place.
Yep.
For Pat.
Yep.
Yeah. Was she okay?
Yep.
Actually. And AGN place thing, she is coming and bringing the, the social work contract tonight.
Oh.
That's what I thought, because she emailed it, like.
For the AGN place?
Yeah.
Right. Early in the afternoon. They came up with the description.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what you had talked about, or were you gonna also talk about Matt's?
Yes, that and the tool library and the signs, none of which will take a lot of time.
The what?
Tool library information, and then we were talking.
Oh, oh, oh. Yep.
About signs.
Yep.
On a road. And so we moved along and had some information for you, because most, both of them were just information.
A lot of all of it is.
Yeah, some updates. Yeah, just communicating.
Okay, I'll call a meeting goer at seven o'clock. We reviewed and then. No, I will, I'll change it. We, I move that we accept the minutes of the August 29 minute meeting.
Second.
Vote. We will go right to AGN place.
That's not me. She's not going to do it.
Yeah, she emailed just this afternoon, but maybe we can move that one back a little bit, move the agenda.
Bill, it'd be very long, right?
No, I have a handout, just a summary of my remarks, and I'll just use those. I wanted to update you on four things. You recall that the, we have a poll survey that's going to start in about a week. People, this is something that you guys approved a few meetings ago, and there will be trucks with the name Matrix on them around town for about a month. They say they can do 600 polls a week, and so it's going to take about four weeks to do the 2,400 telephone polls in town. Bet you didn't know that.
Four weeks?
Polls in town.
Yeah, that sounds like a lot.
They're going to have information to hand out to people who are curious about what they're doing, and that, this, that brings me to the second item. You know, we have a ballot initiative coming up. This was passed and discussed at the town meeting. We're working with town councils, get the wording correct. We will present to the select board your next meeting, the wording for that ballot initiative, so that it could be approved in time for the town clerk to get it in the ballots.
Well, what is the ballot initiative for?
This is for the broadband project that was approved in one of the Warren articles at town meeting.
Okay, so ballot initiative represents what though? Does it represent an opportunity to vote as a citizen?
Offered an opportunity to vote on whether they would like to have our broadband project go forward. You want me to answer questions?
No, no, I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't able to make any of the high-speed internet meetings or anything, so I'm pretty much in the, in the dark, except for what I gathered regarding communication.
Sure, well, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have it, right now, we're gonna have a public meeting at the community center on Saturday the 22nd, after the free breakfast at 11 o'clock, so that was one of the other things I wanted to mention. You know, once we have that language, and probably before you guys have a chance to approve it, we're gonna share that with.
What was the date?
Excuse me?
What was the date?
The, the public meeting will be in October 22nd. But, but we plan to have much more communication before then. We will be staffing information tables at the transfer station, community center, and other places. We'll be sending emails to people who have told us they would like to hear from us by email, social media, and, and mailings from us and Matrix. So the state of the grant application is going, the rules for that are going to be announced on September 23rd, and the window for applying is October 10th through November 9th. So there's a lot of different things going on, and we may come back to the town for some information for that grant. Of things that, you know, like financial condition, insurance, et cetera, that we've already talked about a little bit. The last thing I just wanted to mention was the, some updated information. As I said, we've been working on a communication plan to, to be as transparent as possible, let everybody know what's going on. And we have updated information that's updated from what we had at town meeting. I expect that will be available and distributed widely, posters, handouts, everything, within about a week. I wanted to mention one element of that. It looks like the, the cost of the project will break out into three parts. Matrix is the company building the network. They're gonna pay for 40%. We hope to get a grant for 35% of the cost, and the town of Mount Vernon, which is required to make a contribution, would pay 25%. So what we're talking about is a broadband internet system that meets the state standards, which none of our internet today meets, and will last for 30 years for 25 cents on the dollar. Some of these numbers could change, you know, there's a lot of uncertainty about inflation and interest rates, and, and most of this isn't gonna affect the town for, until either next year or the following year, but we'll have more on that later. I just wanted you to, to know first, and if you have any questions, I've got all my information in my binder.
Are you the person to contact about this?
Excuse me?
Contact about more information?
You have access to the website of the town? There's a contact information on there for the broadband committee, and then you could do that. There will be, another thing that's interesting, in the town of Wells, where Matrix is working, they have a kiosk. And we're gonna come back to you at some point and probably ask to put the kiosk in the lobby here, and it, it's a, it's basically an iPad where people can log on, they can provide information to, to sign up for information. And then the, there'll be a blog at Matrix that tells everybody what the status of the project is. This project's gonna go on for a couple of years, so it's not, you know, something that's gonna happen tomorrow, but yes.
Hey, I've been involved in Bianis' work on this too, and they're, they're going with the Axiom, and it's really interesting, in order to encourage people to sign up at the very get-go, they're providing free hookup to their house.
Right.
Beforehand, and if you wait until after the, the startup period, then you have to pay for the hookup.
I'm glad you brought that up, because our plan provides a free hookup, standard hookup for the first 570 people who sign up. And they can sign up, it's not an obligation. If they sign up and change their mind, they don't have to spend anything, but if they want to get a free hookup, which, you know, standard hookup is 300 feet from the road, and if they want, they want to get it free, they should sign up. And we'll be probably inviting people to sign up within a few weeks. By the way, one other thing, I think that the, if I know what Axiom is doing, it's very different from ours, and that I believe that Bian is going to own the network. We had a lot of debate about that. We didn't think that that was something our town was ready to do. And so what we have instead is we have an option to buy the network after five years, and after 20 years, we could buy it for $5, or $10. But anyway, that's a big difference between what Bian is doing and what we're doing.
Yeah, because that, Axiom's going to be managing, but then they get 15% every month for every such. $15 every month for every subscriber.
Understood, understood. We looked very closely at Axiom, it was a very attractive project. We were also concerned, they only have seven employees, and they've only been in the business for a couple of years. The company we signed up with has been in the fiber network business for 27 years, and we, we just felt a little more comfortable, given the size of our town, and what we have to deal with.
So, though, though, I'm already connected to the internet at home, right? Should I still be signing up?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because it's gonna be better in cheaper.
Okay.
That's the short answer.
I love it. Thank you.
I will send a question via the website, but I do have some very specific questions from people about how much is it gonna cost me to, to hook up if I don't have a standard 315 foot, you know, how much per foot?
Probably about a dollar per foot.
Okay.
Beyond the 300 feet.
Yeah. What about getting television through?
How, well, cable television is not part of the deal. There's a lot of subscription streaming services that I have. I haven't had cable for five years.
Yeah.
And so for about $60 a month, you can get YouTube TV, watch Mount Vernon, or you can get a number of other services that I find, I don't need 1,000 different stations. I watch four stations.
Okay, so those are the kinds of questions that I know people have, and I just want to make sure they're not blindsided by thinking it's going to cost me less, but, oh, I, I do have to add these things on that I'm getting right now, so.
I, you know, we have an exhibit that was handed out at town meeting that did a comparison of current versus future. And I'll, I could share that with you, but send in the question and we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
It's absolutely, you know, affordability is a critical component.
I can't afford it.
Excuse me?
I can't afford it, not by any stretch of the imagination.
Well, there's, there is a, depending on your income status.
I'm not talking about income. I'm talking about the fact that I have high-speed internet right now, and it's costing me 60 bucks a month, period. And I don't have to have any special streaming devices or anything else, and I'm not tethered to anybody.
Okay.
I didn't want to affect your taxes. But it will affect my taxes regardless.
No, if, if this goes through, it will affect you.
I just want to mention one thing. The, the Federal Communications Commission has a PRAM for people to subsidize their internet subscriptions for $30 a month, so there should be a way for you to actually.
No, I don't, I don't want it. I, I can't, you can't beat quality like that.
What I'm saying is you can get what you're getting today for $30 a month less from the same company. You don't have to change anything. All you have to do is.
I'd have to be tethered, I'd have to be tethered to, to a cable line or a landline or something, and I don't want to be tethered to any cable lines or landlines or anything.
Are you, you're saying no?
The only thing I have is power CMP in my house.
Okay, you're using it.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Pat, you're on.
Uh, thank you. Did you guys get an email I sent out earlier today?
I didn't see a, I didn't see that you sent out an email.
Okay, yeah. You didn't see that I turned it out? This is not for no. And I included the social worker consultant job description, but I was looking, using copies of it.
I don't need one here.
Personally, I like to have a chance to read something before, so it's not just.
I can't see your adorable face. Could you scoot over in front of the door? The chairs are so tall, and I can't see you, and I want to see you. I'm hearing you, I'm hearing you, but I'm not seeing you. Oh, that sounds much better. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Is that better?
Is it this?
I have it here, I can. Do you want to wait until Carrie makes the copies, or you want me to go ahead?
No, go ahead.
Um, so the AGN place committee spent some time putting together what we think is a job description to be, to advertise a job, okay? And we wanted you guys to look at it. It, it's kind of lengthy, but it definitely lays out what the responsibilities would be. And you may choose to edit it and cut it if you feel that's necessary. We're hoping that it could be advertised in a number of different places. The town website, the KJ, the Sun Journal, the Daily Bulldog, with the advertiser, or even as one of them. To get the word out that we're looking for this person. So just so you know, the last time around, we had assisted on a licensed social worker, and that really hamstrung us. So we have done some research, and we don't need to have anyone who's a licensed social worker, as long as that individual has just had the education, if that's what. Well, I don't know, there's a lot I can say about it. We broke it down into a couple categories. Background, how we came to this point, that definitely might be able to be shortened. The contractor qualifications, the contractor duties and responsibilities, the duration, any evaluation. So you know, as with, most of the rest of the committees in town are rebuilding because of many losses on our committees, and so this is one that's, that's pretty important, you know, to put in place.
Is there any chance of losing funds if we don't move?
Is there any chance of losing funds if we don't move fast enough?
No, no, there's a, you gotta help me with this. Five thousand dollars in a MEHAP grant that's designated for this position.
For that position?
Talked to them already, and we are, they were supporting us and we had no intention of taking money back.
For that position or for the health officer, or these are two different?
Oh, Bob.
I think, I think of that. I think it was a social worker.
That's a social worker.
That's health officer.
No, go back, go back to the other way.
Okay, this has, for consultants, this is a MEHAP budget.
Great.
Um. Five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. And. It does not address. The health officer. On this sheet. Remember how we were going to pay for the health officer? Name, any ideas?
I. So I wasn't at the last meeting, everything was going fine.
It, it was going to be part of, I wasn't at the meeting, but from what I've learned, I've been trying to catch up on this. Um, the health officer was voted by the committee. They did talk about it with MEHAP, and it, MEHAP agreed with it, the only, only thing that we have to be careful of. Is this contract for the social worker. Pretty much blocks us into paying, so we have to be real careful. That we continue to follow the budget because we could lose MEHAP funds if we're not meeting their budgets and doing the filings. So, at that point, we would not have the funds to continue with the health officer, and that, that's the risk of signing this because you're contracting the town. To be liable for. This.
I thought when they talked to them, they said, we won't take the money back.
I'm pretty sure they.
They gave us time to kind of re-.
Were there any changes?
Changing, maybe. But, yeah, you probably, I haven't caught up on all emails.
You know, on. Last night.
Um, this, this, uh. Uh, I don't know.
Okay, remember, he lives in town, he's the one that administers the, the grant, and he is awesome. I mean, whatever we want, we can do, you just have to ask him. And he makes sure that it fits in the, you know, in the constraints of the, uh, of what the grant says we have to do. We want to change something, we can, so I'm not worried about that, I'm not worried about losing money. Uh, we need to spend money, we haven't spent any money yet.
Yeah.
That's grand. And so, you know, we've got until the end of the year to spend. How much, twenty thousand?
I think they gave us until, just to get going and figure out what we're gonna do and change everything, but then start having programs in the spring.
So we're also looking, I don't want to get off track too, too much, but we're also looking at a program director.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's another position that's gonna require, um. Some finding someone, finding volunteers, and then paying the director, so. We've got, we definitely have some individuals that we can spend the money on. Just try to take one step at a time, and this is the first one.
So when you contract with somebody, it doesn't matter how many hours they work, we, we don't have, we can't tell them. You know, this is how many hours we're expecting from you, sometimes it could go up, it could go down.
Yeah, actually, that's what we can, yeah. And we have, we've said, this is not a full-time job.
No, no, I get that, five thousand dollars.
It's up, up to ten dollars, up to ten hours a month.
Okay. That's a very part-time job.
That's very good. And we changed it from twenty-five dollars an hour, which we thought was an insult, to thirty dollars an hour.
That's an industry standard for caregiving.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we thought, just not a lot of time, you know, I mean. Because the expectations, I think, are, are great. For this position, so hopefully we find someone who would say, oh my gosh, I would love to do that, that would be so cool.
They're out there, people like that, like you.
Pardon me?
People like that are out there, just like you are.
Uh-huh. You thinking about it, you a social worker, Tim?
Um, I think this looks great, I had, I wondered if we should ask people to contact. Either the select board or someone on the Aging and Place Committee. Instead of, unless you've already talked to Heather and she's on board, I just don't want to put extra duties on her plate without. Without her consent.
You mean people talking about the job description?
Yeah, for the, for the, to apply for this position, contact.
Yeah. I don't think I've, I don't think I've.
Oh.
Candidates contact to ask about the position, it shouldn't be the select board, right? It should be somebody on, I would think, somebody on the Aging and Place Committee, do we have people that we kind of are visiting?
Oh, I suppose we can do that, I, I had said, um, if you were interested, the contact, um. Who's that, who's that?
Yeah, you've got the town clerk on there.
The contact, uh. How's it work? Um, for an application is where I was thinking, and whoever it is, we should, but are we missing that sheet? That last, back. Last, your second page, that says for. Um. Now you don't have it.
But yeah, it's just for the application.
Yeah, Heather can email them when that.
Yeah. All right, I suppose that if, um. If we became aware of someone who was interested in the job, would it be appropriate for us to reach out to that person?
Yes.
Yeah, if you do it that way.
And then we have a candidate bring either one or two or whatever to us.
Yeah.
Yeah, what if, I'd like to just suggest one thing too here. There's a, there's a review after six months. Um, I think at some point in here, we should make it so that, and I'm talking from the town, not from the Aging and Place Committee. That we should make it so that it's a review, not just of, of how this is working out, but monetarily, how this is working out too. So that if, if the funds for some reason weren't there, because we spent six hundred dollars, we have. Um, I think it's thirty-three thousand of the thirty-six thousand that we have in this, this account. Thirty-three thousand that is the MEHAP, so if somehow we decide we can't, if we can't go that direction. That money is at risk, I mean, they're, they're saying they won't take it back, but if we just.
Yeah, no, we need it, yeah.
So, the, the contract should make sure that it's clear that it's a review, not only of how they're working out. But to how the financial situation is, so that the town wouldn't be held liable for.
Okay, yeah, so that's just.
Yeah, well, that's good.
Just real quick.
I'm also thinking that, as I recall, hopefully this, if I'm incorrect. That Frank said, if we didn't spend the money by the end of the year, it was okay. We can carry it over until next June, the twenty-twenty-three, and still we see the. Or much money we're supposed to get in twenty-twenty.
Yeah. When we were talking about starting that, if we do the senior program, it wouldn't be till the spring, the first, and they were on board with that.
Yeah. So, as far as money concerned. Well, I, I'm not really concerned, because.
But we do need to be physically responsible and make sure everything's.
Oh, absolutely, that's what we need to do to keep an eye, keep an eye on us. And you do a wonderful job.
Good job.
Yeah, first money you spend will be the health officer's.
But that.
First money you spend will be the health officer.
The social worker.
Correct.
Right.
No, the, the social, MEHAP is also behind. Um, five thousand to the town, towards the health officer.
Yeah.
So we can sweeten the problem a bit.
We don't want to go special town meeting.
How, how do we get the mission plan? Of exactly what the social worker is looking to achieve here? How, how do they, those decisions? Well, no, I mean, how do you, I mean, it's, it's kind of a broad stroke as far as, you know, elderly, disadvantaged, disabled, low income, whatever. I mean, what, are there set out goals for, um, those people? What is, what is designed to, in place, and what's in place to help those people? How's that defined?
Right now. So we've identified, I believe, seventy-something people in town that, that we should, um, keep track of. And then each person on the Aging and Place Committee was assigned X number of people. Um, and so what you do is you call them, you know, and check in with them. The, how's everything going, anything you need, and just initiate a conversation. And then do that, well, on a fairly regular basis. Um, and so, if that person. Has a need. Um, we're not expected to rectify that, we're expected to ask that, uh, to somebody to help. And that's for the social worker, we commit, if one of my people had some. Something that would require it, but they just can't handle themselves. And I would let the social worker know, and then the social worker can initiate contact, either call that person. And/or this is person.
And we've had this in place already, so we.
So you've got historical.
Yes.
Um, yes.
And performance.
Yeah.
And we've got, are there specific criteria? For people who are eligible? Do they have to apply, is there a specific criteria for those who get services? For those who were checked in? They're like, they're trying by the health officer, as far as the people that you feel, and, and other town officials who are aware of problems. And then other people who are involved kind of identify. Like somebody who knows their neighbor who's very, you know, needs some help, would mention it to you or you guys, and. And that person would become part of it.
They have a number of things, like a given tree. Things like that.
But are there criteria that say, this person is eligible, this person is not eligible? This person is eligible.
We ever thought about.
I can't say anybody was eligible.
Let's say, let's say you know someone.
Yeah.
Um. Yourself, um, who needs, you know. Contact with, what was one of, again, we're keeping this aging in place thing, wanting people to be able to stay in their homes.
Right, I get that.
Um, and so, if, if anyone thinks of someone, uh, they should let one of us know.
Okay.
And then if that person is not on our list, then we can take care of that.
Yeah, there's a lot of different things.
I just.
Simple things like, something like, you know, do they need to be on medic. Maycare, or do they need to be, you know, is there anything that says, you know? Yeah, it was just a question I was.
No, that's what, you have a question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many years that everything has a criteria, you can't do anything unless somebody. What about? Um, help and support? We're doing that too with, um, like getting sand to people for, in the winter. Roof shoveling, shoveling the sidewalks, we've got, well, sanding, sanding. But nobody goes up on the roof anymore, huh?
Boy, I'm sure.
But that is an issue, that is a very.
Well, that's why, that's why they have roof rags.
Yeah, but I mean, the elderly can't deal with roof rags.
No, I know, but we can get.
Yeah, we've had volunteers.
You're actually right.
How about structural or safety issues within the home? Um.
That would be the health officer, would be the first one to, to see that.
Okay. And we've done that type of repairs as well.
Dr. Onion was really good at that, you would see, the previous health officer would see possible problems in that realm.
We've done fire, uh, smoke detectors, we've done window air.
Right, right, there's a new window.
We do, we work together.
That we just heard about, um, but there's definitely some crossover here because. Um. So the town health officer, um, one of the individuals that she needs to work with is the CEO. And, you know, they, I mean, that's what Dan did, Dan would travel with them together, I mean, there were definitely some. Places that rescue identified, um, that we brought to their attention, um, that they interviewed with, so. Um, there is a lot of crossover, which I love. Um, and one of the things that we determined is really critical. Um, for, for people on our list, is socialization. And so that's why we're working, at some point, our next step will be to work on the, um, the day program. At the community center.
Okay, what about, uh, people who cannot afford to, something like that?
Uh, it wouldn't be a cost at all.
Just like the physical costs. Well, what about getting there?
Neighbors driving neighbors.
Neighbors, which, which has to be scheduled so far out. And it's unreasonable, and there's very few people doing it.
You could, you could pull a few strings and.
Well, and Dan only expects three to four days' notice, so.
Really?
Yeah.
If you have a big enough pool of people, I would think that you could find somebody that you could call.
And Carter. Yeah, you know, lots of things we're looking into as far as transportation. Do you have any there? Is, the drivers are volunteer-driven, so they're kind of like that, they just don't, you know.
I know.
I think too, if you're talking about, especially it's so far out during COVID, it was a problem because of the. Their closeness in a car, and a lot of people driving for.
So is that relaxed significantly?
A lot, I think, I think more people.
Nobody's riding on the bumper anymore, right? Nobody's riding on the bumpers or whatever, it's like, I don't want to go to work.
Well, the other thing is, we really have scheduled days when the, um, when the center. Uh, would be open, and so we can let the neighbors driving neighbors know, this is the day, whatever the date is, you know, that. We may be calling you, um, for help.
Could be choreographed.
Yeah, yeah, like I know something, one of my guys, um, is in a wheelchair, so I'll just. Probably get him there myself, but, um, but neighbors driving neighbors would be perfect. Um, to bring him and then bring him home.
Okay, moving along.
Thank you, Aging and Place Committee.
Anything else?
What?
Anything else?
I don't think so, we, I mean, I just, the only piece I'm a little disappointed with is the very ending, but you guys can do that, you know, the.
Yep.
Um, for. An application, you know, contact, yada, yada, I wonder what happened to that page? Um.
No, no, we see the page, Pat, I just, I just didn't know if you. If you wanted, what you wanted.
Yeah, we, I had it, but I didn't see it.
It came through on email, I just didn't figure out what I presented you. Okay, good.
Um, I have something for Dr., what's her name?
Rachel Pizlau?
Yeah, Dr. Pizlau.
Pizlau, yeah.
If you could give that to her.
Yeah. She is a charm.
It's just something I've got on the web, the MIMON website and.
Oh, okay.
She might find it interesting.
Yeah. Um, she is just wonderful, I, I can't. I mean, it's like she fell from the sky, you know, she's just a, a total delight, and I have hoped she can come tonight.
So we can put her down on the website? If, I don't know if you have.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, she's all set. Thanks.
Give me the contact info. Pull her up.
They're virtual.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Mount Vernon, right, you do.
Yeah, she's on the Belgrade Road.
So, um, okay, so are we good with that?
Pat, yeah, Pat, give her full of Pat, and she can give you that info.
Okay.
Her phone number and stuff like that.
And then, um. And so what are you guys going to do with this?
This job description, that's what she's.
Once you give. At least me a day or so to, uh. Read it over, and then I'll, I'll email you back saying, I love it.
Okay.
You guys will do the same thing.
I read it and I love it.
Okay.
And we can post it on the website.
Let me move it first, anyway. Okay?
Great, thank you.
Yep, I'll get back to you.
I just have one suggestion, if we couldn't find a licensed social worker.
Doesn't have to be licensed.
Or a social worker.
Yeah.
You might be able to find a nurse who's capable of doing exactly the same thing.
Correct, but at one point, we considered someone brought up, um, a nurse practitioner, possibly, um, so, yeah.
It wouldn't even have to be a nurse, be a nurse practitioner, or even any nurse who's been in the system and knows exactly where things are in the context.
Yeah.
That would be. That would be sufficient and it might broaden our search for somebody.
Thank you, that's a great idea.
Most maybe advertising on places that are health related instead of just the KBJ and stuff like that.
Oh, yeah.
More specialized.
Not we're invited on a page. Okay, so can I ask Carl one?
Yep.
Quick thing, sir. Are you the one that's gonna be taking the fire rescue pictures? You personally?
Certainly will be happy to.
Okay, was that the plan was taken?
Anna is on Wednesday.
What's that?
Anna is taking them on.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Okay, so Anna.
Yes, Pat.
Most of my rescue people are not available on Wednesday.
Okay, we can pick it up.
And I would rather not have two people in the picture and then name all the people who are missing. I'd rather do it when if that's, if that's not an issue.
That's fine. Do you want to just?
Oh, I just have. Wednesdays are actually the best time.
Just not this one.
Perhaps next, perhaps next Wednesday, would you be available?
I believe so, let me. It is, yes, it is fair week, um, but later in the evening, what time?
And we can go wherever you want.
Okay.
If she can't do it, one of us can help.
This is very true, Jane. I didn't know Dana was the official.
Happy to do it.
Carl's a wood master.
I talked to Anna and Lucas, Anna and Lucas uh last week and we had decided that Anna was going to do the fire department in wrestling.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
We're all happy to do it.
So what, so what would be a good time?
Um, like seven, that's the twenty first, right?
Next Wednesday, a week from Wednesday, what's the date?
Twenty first.
Twenty third?
The first.
First.
Twenty first.
Two one.
Twenty one.
I think Saturday be October.
Thank you, Anna's the one.
Yeah, it's moving better.
At seven. PM, right?
Yeah, or I mean, I guess AM time too.
Yeah, it's almost halfway through, ready to go.
Okay, my friend, well hopefully I'll get Rachel here at some point.
Okay.
She has a Monday. She said, well, next Monday I can. I said, well, we don't meet next Monday. Kind of idea. Oh, and speaking of meeting on Mondays, is it possible in the newsletter um, rather than have or addition to having every other Monday, if you'd actually put the date that would be coming up that month? For the select board, yeah. I mean, if you come all the time, you would know, but if you don't come all the time, you wouldn't know.
I appreciate that, cause I.
I'll put it in the calendar on the website, yeah, cause less. Yeah.
Okay, I'm good, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Okay. You guys are up.
Pat, just in case you didn't get the email, my CPC meeting, I'm sorry, is Wednesday at my house, so first I.
Correct.
She said she'll be there.
So do I need to be here for what, the pressure door?
Well, you're always needed unless you can't make it.
We can be quick.
Right. You know, yeah.
This is CPC, so we see Wednesday at my house.
Yeah, this is CPC stuff.
Yep. Yep.
What's your phone number, Pat?
All right. So.
Pat. What's your phone number?
My phone number? Um, two nine three, two five nine seven, and my cell is five zero zero three three zero six.
Because there's a couple of things I think I'd love to talk to you about, you know, and I don't want to take up long time, it's just not necessary.
Sure, any time. Okay.
Okay, good, we're ahead.
Okay, well, I'm here actually for what I said I was going to be here for, but I've added two very short items of information.
Okay.
Okay, um, on the letter that we sent to the commissioner of the DOT, which you always right, that you you see the copy of.
This is for the North Road Catch Basin.
Well, it's more than that. It's also the fire department, um, the stream is eroding, um, the fire department. And so when the DOT, when you contacted Bob and thank you for doing that, asking them when they were going to come to do that whole work from the Catch Basin, which is now at Magda's property except for it's disappeared, it's not a catch basin, it's a plunge pool.
Yeah.
And apply to the stream and putting new rip raft all along, this fire department part of the stream. Because when the DEP and the DOT met with this community partnership two years ago now, twenty twenty one, that would be one year, doesn't matter, but over, it's a long time. Uh, they noticed that this fire department is, it's in danger. So you have to, so when you got the, when you called to say, when were they gonna do the work?
Yeah.
And they said not this year and maybe not next year.
Right.
We went, what? That can't be, it simply cannot be. So we, uh, like Clyde Dyer suggested that we send a letter to the commissioner of DOT. Um, because he has a contact at the DOT with, because he's Clyde, he's been doing this kind of business for a long time. And he called the contact and said, how can we get this done because this is too important? And he said, right, the commissioner, uh, the commissioner needs to know the importance of this. So we did. And we thought, you know, at the community partnership, we're gonna count what you're doing work for twenty years, that it's okay that this letter comes from us. Why? Because we were the ones that had the site, the uh DEP and the DOT. We organized eleven projects to protect Minihawk, and this is the eleventh project. When that's done, Minihawk is the protector that we could possibly get it to be. So since we started that process, we thought we certainly have to, the town can write to you, the commissioner, and so we have. You may hear from him as a select board or him. I doubt very much you will hear from him, but you may hear, um, oh, well, maybe you will. Uh, Jamie Andrews, who is in charge of our area, or David, um, that you guys met.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody from the DOT will probably contact either you or Clyde.
Okay.
Okay, and if I'm, we're gonna give them, the letter was sent on September fifth. I'm gonna, I personally am going to give them a couple of weeks and then I'm gonna contact the person who's office in Mag. And say either contact you or us, because it cannot be not done next year. Next year, the, you know, have, whatever, it has to be done.
Yeah, the contract had run out last year, September.
I know, and you guys, if you have, you said, because there was money to put aside, and then you took it away. And you said you could put it back, so keep it in there, because if you don't, there's a point at which it has to go into you know, under designated funds. We have to go through the whole process again. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob. I would wish you would.
Might I suggest too that maybe if you've got, um, let's try to be made or. Yeah, if you got them involved too, because it's the health of the lake, they might put some pressure on because.
Well, the DEP gave, uh.
We're not in the Seven Lakes, we're in the Thirty Mile.
We're in the Thirty Mile.
We're partly in the Seven Lakes, but not.
Contract that you guys have with, is both recognition of and been approved by the Department of Environmental Protection and Department of Transportation. So unless we can get God involved, I think we've got all the necessary people.
Right.
So, um, I'm sorry for my humor, it's probably inappropriate for technical.
The thing is, we, we put away fifteen pounds. That may not be enough.
Well.
We're talking a year down the road now.
I know, but that's kind of like our problem, not theirs. Well, because this is half for a year and nobody did anything about, so. Um, I know, I'm sorry. Now, there's two other things, it's just for information. Um, community partnership, as you know, has a tool library on your block here.
Right, yeah.
And Tom Ward was the one to manage it, and Tommy and Ivan are moving to Guatemala, which I say, what? You know, happily do that, but they are. That's what, we'll miss them all awfully terribly. Anyway, so since he couldn't manage it, um, Pat Roslin and I went to visit with the Mill Stream um Grange. Because they had expressed to Tom an interest in taking over the project. And so Pat and I went to their meeting.
Yep.
Discussed it, lots of good questions.
Yep.
There were twenty people there, twenty, thirty people there. Um, and about a week later, um, we were contacted that they would like to take over the responsibility.
The community partnership?
No, the Mill, the Mill Stream Range and Bianna.
And Bianna.
They want to take over what?
They want to manage it.
Manage.
The tool shed.
The tool shed.
Oh, the tools.
The little red barn.
Little red barn. They have, uh, we have eight hundred, we got the grant, which paid thirty five hundred dollars for, for the little red barn, um, and we have eight hundred dollars left, which we will give to, um, this, um, to the Grange, to the Grange. For their, because they need to, there's still more tools that will be required to be purchased with sixty seven tools donated. But there are, you know, lists of, but they, that it will be there, so they're gonna do what they're gonna do, but they were interested in knowing what it was we were going to do. They will have it open on Saturday mornings for about three hours, and the community partnership will still be involved in that if they need help. They'll call us and we'll find a volunteer for a Saturday that they need. Oh, now, we need to, it's not gonna happen till next spring. Um, because it's too late now, we're gonna have snow in about two weeks, right? Um, I, we will have to have main municipal association discuss the insurance. Um, the insurance will be through them for the use of the library. You know, people will come and borrow things, et cetera, but the town, it's on your property, so you have to be named on it so that if for some reason it goes up in flames or something, then you know, that it's not gonna harm in any way. So we will contact the main municipal association about the insurance for the project.
Is there anything in there now?
There are sixty tools in there, you know, rates, it's, it's, it's all for gardeners.
Okay, I'll have them here on Thursday, so I'll talk to them.
Oh, the main municipal?
Yeah.
Okay, right, um, and somewhere in this office is a key.
I was gonna ask you that.
If Tom gave a key to the office, and if we're afraid, okay, what happens if we can't find the key? It doesn't matter, we take the bolt thing and we can.
Universal key.
It might be that, okay, that's good to know.
If we're gonna have to go through the Grange in the spring.
But sadly, Tom also has a key, correct?
No, he thinks that Tom, well, he might, but he thinks that he gave it to the town.
His key.
Yeah, but what?
His, his key, I thought there were two keys. He had one and one was.
Oh, and he's leaving and went, he's leaving.
They're gonna be gone for twelve weeks.
I'm sure he asked the horse.
Well, it may be. The four guys are just going crazy trying to move to Guatemala. Uh, anyway, but the household, and I understand the, um, cafe was sold.
Oh, no.
And I promise, um, when we went on and, and we got all that set, it's no problem, it's a, but it was, you were there, but David said that he said, one good safety process, um, safety thing you can do to slow traffic besides with the delineators, and maybe as effective as not horse, is a sign in, at each you know, you get twenty five mile an hour zone sign, so twenty feet or so before that sign, you could put a sign that says approaching Mount Vernon Village.
Right.
So they see that, and then they drive a little further and they see the twenty five miles per hour, and then they go, that's why it's twenty five miles an hour. Because they're approaching the village.
They do hit that delineator.
Yeah, well, they just progress ahead. So the community partnership is offering and wants to pay for the signs. Um, and it, but we cannot, I'm not real good at postal vendors, so we were hoping we were hoping that our road commissioner, and next year, we're not talking this year, good June. I contacted, uh, contacted Staples who does metal science, because we don't want to have anything to do with the wood. And I, we can purchase as many, well, a sign for um forty five dollars at eighteen by twenty four, which is the same size as the sign at the parking lot, signed by the masons that says, that parking.
Right, yeah.
So that size, forty five dollars. So we are, and we would be metal, and we're meeting on, this is gonna be our next president. Um, we are meeting on Wednesday, my house, Tuesday, um, anyway, and so we will put the we can get one sign, or we can get a sign because they're forty five bucks a piece. We'll probably can afford a sign for every entering town, uh, road in our town.
Well. North Road.
North Road.
Forty one.
Forty one.
Forty one.
Right, Belgrade.
And Belgrade.
Okay.
So we could probably get, you know, for forty five bucks, I'm sure that the community partnership would be happy to do that. I don't know if the town has posts. Do you have posts like hanging around somewhere that you can know? So if the, if you need the post, we could probably afford to do that.
We buy them a little longer, we cut off three feet, we drive three foot in, and then we bolt the post.
I love this man right there, because that.
Much easier than trying to drive a post that's twelve feet long.
Okay, so I don't know anything about posts, but I could find that out, uh, I can definitely get the signs.
Talk to Lee.
Okay, talk to Lee, but I need to be, he needs to know I might talk to him, because he's gonna go, what? I'm not doing that same thing. Or he's gonna say, which ever.
Who are you getting the signs from?
Uh, Staples.
Oh, okay.
But if you want a bigger sign than that, which I'm not sure you would need that.
Did you try Darryl up on Bianna? Where's your sign?
Well, I emailed her, she never emailed me back.
Oh, you might.
I really was trying to get it to her.
Uh, yeah, you might just swing in and give him a, oh, a swing up and drive.
I can call, we did all the signs.
I know she does.
Yeah, and he's usually a lot cheaper.
All right, and we'll check. Would you?
There you go. If they were, if they were price checking.
Yeah, yeah.
He does a lot for the fire department, it's usually very reasonable.
I'll check on the posts for you.
They check on posts, and and at least add Lee, if that's okay, next year if we would put possibly four signs up. He would not personally, maybe his son is like that, so.
Yep.
Okay, that's me.
Okay.
Is, is there any movement on the Lake Hill?
Situation?
Yeah, nothing.
Why?
That's another state problem that we ran into.
Um. The quick update.
Yeah, the last thing we, that I, anyway, and I think that's what you got, um, was that bridge was never put onto a schedule to be done. Now, we, we have the engineering done, we paid fifty thousand dollars, we have the drawings, and we sent them to the state to be approved so we could get the sixty percent. So we never heard back from the state, so I called them, and they said that they have not made the determination on if they were gonna do the bridge or if we're gonna do the bridge. Now, that's completely opposite of what we were.
We put the bridge in initially.
It's a state bridge. We can't touch the bridge.
Well, then what are they expecting the town to actually do?
They were gonna take the bridge down, out, and we were gonna put our own bridge in, and it would've been our bridge. We had that all set. Now, now we don't know if they're gonna do it or if we're gonna do it. Once they tell us what's gonna happen, it's at least two years down the road, because once they put it into a schedule uh, schedules right now are all done for two thousand twenty three, that's, that's all taken up. So next year, it'll be done for two thousand twenty four. I don't even put that bridge on for that year either. We're looking at two thousand twenty five maybe.
If it lasts that long. It's kind of like the whistles over there at Castle Island, right?
Right.
That wasn't on the schedule until twenty twenty forty, we looked at and considered.
So if they, if they say that we should repair the bridge, then, then Lee can come in and do with that bridge what he did on the Carter Hill Bridge.
Well, it's too big a stand.
It's too big a stand, um, but.
We have, we have, we have a bridge design, it's a, it's an actual bridge.
Is it concrete, concrete steel?
It's metal, it's, it's iron and. Concrete, yeah.
Prefab, or, or pre?
No. Board.
So you have a core deck?
Yeah.
Okay. What about a, a mesh deck, a steel mesh deck?
No.
Why wouldn't that fly?
This is a pre, pre, not prefab, but it's a pre-engineered design.
So it comes in pieces?
What's that?
Comes in, in pieces and then it's.
Yeah, it's one, one span all the way across the ceiling. And it's, for us, it would've been like six hundred thousand. We would've paid two hundred.
They were offering a matching grant?
No, the state would've paid sixty percent.
Well, that's what I'm saying, isn't that matching, matching?
But now, prices, you don't know, you have no idea now.
Yeah, they did, the last update I got, so basically to be put on their schedule, they needed the town. Like approval for the projects, that happened at town meeting.
Right.
Um, and then we sent them a letter confirming that vote, and so then with that paperwork. When they do their work plans, it can be added in, which is sometime this fall. So hopefully, we'll know more at that point.
Okay.
Um, when I talked to them, they weren't too worried about, they felt like there was enough room in that budget that. Could stay within it, but who's to say what, what the economy does? In those days, but.
Okay, I'm out of here.
Jason?
Thank you, guys.
Thankful.
No, I gotta get your key, that was what you were coming Wednesday for.
What's that?
I said, you didn't get my email. Well, I'll, I'll talk to you later, I'll get your key, but that's cause it's changed. The locks all changed.
The locks are all changed.
Everybody in town lives with.
I sent an email, but I probably have to stand.
Oh, that guy.
My head up against the door, I was gonna buy some W B forty.
Hi, everyone.
Thank you, I'm done.
Okay, go ahead, Jason.
Um, so one of the things that, um, in, Thursday, they're meeting on the Castle Island.
Yes, yeah.
So I can't make that through my normal work schedule, but as far as. The best I can tell, there's no houses in that span of road between the boat launch and where they're doing construction. So unless we have a woods fire or something silly out there again on the point, the state-owned land right there on that point, then. We need to just be able to get in if there's a, you know, some sort of fire on the point, but. Otherwise, as long as we can get turned around at the boat launch, I don't have any concerns from the fire department. There's no houses for rescue or fire to really protect in that area.
So will the, the boat launch be not blocked off?
Um, it looks like it's.
Free now.
Yeah, I think it's far enough down that it's not going to be, but I guess that may be a question to ask, I don't know. Are you going on Thursday in it or is someone going? I mean, that would be the only thing, as long as we have a spot to turn around, that boat launch is perfect, cause it makes a, a perfect move, right?
You want Ron to go?
Um, maybe if he's available, I don't know what his schedule is, but, um, um, and it really, there again, there's no structures in that area.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the biggest problem for, for us and for Belgrade is that.
If there's a call.
If there's a call, we're going out Watson Pond Road and there's a huge detour, huge sixteen miles. Uh, and. Go all the way, oh, two, I'm sorry, something, so. Which was, uh, twenty miles, twenty-six miles the other night. So, um, but, yeah, what we've been doing to get into Belgrade is go up Watson Pond and cut back across.
Are you going across there now with the party truck?
Uh, if we had. Permission, well, but it would be tight, I mean, it's, it's a small bridge, so.
Are they gonna leave that over winter?
No, they're, they're talking about now tearing it back out to do start construction, you know, as soon as possible.
That's what we're gonna find out Thursday.
So, I mean, it changes things drastically again, I mean, we can go up right now until, um, winter. When, um, you know, Cottle Hill gets closed for the winter, then we have that shortcut. Or we can go all the way out to Dunn's Corner, come back in from Williams Mills into Belgrade that way.
I wonder if there's any way we could power.
Sometimes, but for the trucks sometimes, no.
Yeah.
Cottle, Cottle Hill's a, a very shortcut, if.
Yeah, as long as.
Keeps it open.
Long as it's open, right, and maybe, I don't, I don't know if the road was standard, Lee could tell you better than that, I think with the runoff, I think you're gonna end up.
Yeah.
Um, with headaches there.
Yeah.
Significantly in the spring more than.
Spring.
Yeah.
It is not wide enough to have it open to the winter.
No, I mean.
Flowing and, and those.
It's pretty, pretty narrow, even in summertime and fall, so it definitely, um, it is a shortcut, I've always. Um, kinda wish for it to be a more permanent road, but. Same thing with Moore Hill, cause, or, or cut across, Lake Hills, just equally as important in town, so. Um, all of them, all of our problem spots are, uh, troublesome.
Was there some sort of, uh, I, I haven't been able to find any communication to, to back this up, and I might've been dreaming, I don't know. But was there some sort of initiative, uh, here for, um, unimproved town roads that are sustaining high levels of development? Is there hopeless, is there something about that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm dreaming, good, I'm glad. That's it.
I think Mike would like that, but. The roads that are.
I know.
Being developed that are in that situation, yeah.
So my other. Which Bob and I have talked about, and, um, Anna's been, I'm sure, apprised of. Engine fifty-three, which is the oldest truck in the fleet, has, um, had engine troubles. So we took it to Meters Garage, which is the cheapest place to work on a diesel truck right now in the area. Um, so currently what they have in repairs on the truck is two thousand two hundred and seventeen dollars, twenty-one cents. But there's some tax on there that we could get in to take off with a tax ID number.
Actually, uh, town municipalities aren't supposed to pay taxes.
Okay, so we, I'm sure he'll take it off, but it's on that number that I've given you, but, um. So I can give that to you, it's not a bill yet, I don't know, was I saying it's an invoice? I didn't see where it said it was an invoice.
Yes, it does.
It does, okay, so that one, that one I can submit for payment on the next payroll, um, the, um. I've got nine thousand dollars that was allocated by the town, that's town meeting, for truck repairs. However, um, I think we have, and, and Carrie, you could tell me better, in that account, I think we've had a slight drawdown, but nothing made, nothing significant. So, that being said, the repairs that are still needed on the truck is eighty-five hundred. And that's still pending the parts to be delivered, so. The other dilemma I have is in that normal nine thousand dollars that we set aside every year. Um, we're required to do pump tests on each truck. And the pump tests, um, you know, runs between nine hundred and twelve hundred dollars, depending on what they find. The base test is nine hundred, there's usually something always wrong with at least one of the trucks that. If you figure an average of twelve hundred dollars per truck at thirty-six hundred dollars for the three trucks. That you come out okay without being in the, you know, in the red. So, and then we estimated, I, and I honestly didn't ask anybody for prices on this, but I estimated trucking. In, uh, vehicle inspections to be around five hundred. That may be an overestimate, but I didn't wanna tell you less, right? I could be wrong even at that five hundred. Um, so the total that I, I believe that I'm gonna need without any other unexpected problems is fourteen thousand eight seventeen twenty-one. And so minus the nine thousand that's in the budget. Um, that brings you down to five thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars and twenty-one cents that we need to try and come up.
Are there any of the special equipment accounts that maybe you could throw up a percent?
So if I pull out of those accounts, then I'll be overdrawing other things that we, that we have money set aside in those accounts. So one of those accounts completely covers the SCBA, any SCBA repairs, replacements and things like that. The other account counts for turnout gear, um, and I've got people on the department currently that need new gear, so I've got to, uh, do something to that.
Don't shoot me, just a question about the water holes.
The water holes, uh, how much is left in there, because I know we paid Lee, but yes, we, we could run from that.
There's eight. Uh, we haven't paid him anything this year.
Okay, so.
So I have eight thousand dollars in the water.
Was that, did the work that he did, uh, on the water hole up top?
I think that was in the spring.
So it did hit last year's budget, so. Um, yeah, the only thing that I would be doing with the water hole money this year would be doing gravel work. But I could forego it for a year, and we could use some of that money towards it as well.
You, you're losing several of them, the one down by Jacobs, that one's all weeds now.
Yes.
You'd probably have to dig that one out, you lost the one up by Kent's.
Yes, the Kent one we closed because that was, um, when I had Lee go up there to try and dig it out, there wasn't enough. Um, area to dig out anymore, it was, it, it wouldn't have been a viable water hole with the sludge that's in the area, so he would've. Would've cost more than it's worth, and it usually goes pretty stagnant, so. Um, I have Woods End, which is nearby, which is why I agreed to lose that one, plus we have, um. Over on, um, by Doug Stevens and.
Yes.
We had, uh, the one that's on Doug's property.
Yeah.
Um, so those two are reasonably distanced apart, and so I was comfortable losing that one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the old one at Pelton's, I had the Moonfield hydrant, because that had been dried up for years.
Yep.
Um, so yeah, there are some areas that could use some maintenance for sure, but usually we avoid using the one down at, um. Jacobs because it's usually pretty ragged. With Calmore, so, um, I, I mean, it's better than nothing, but, um. Generally speaking, try and, and avoid that one and go down to even, uh, brownstone if we have to. Right up.
Okay, yeah.
So that one's usually pretty sulfur, you know. Bartlett, you've got Bartlett, um, but we have to be careful of Milltoil over there, so.
Do you draw out a part of one?
Um, no, we, we don't, um. Bianna has on the stream on the opposite side, they have a hydrant there.
Yeah.
Um, but we don't, um, there, there's really no good access for us except for that boat launch area. So.
And anyhow, is your biggest, um?
That's our most important hydrant, uh, for us, then we have, uh, the one at the Flying Pond. Um, so that's a active one, down on Bean Road by the Walsh Farm.
That's a very. Chipping.
In the Chipping, by the big one, yeah. Those are critical points in town, and then we rely heavily on, um, Fayette has a large tanker, Belgrade has a large tanker, and then we all have. Thousand downwind tankers.
Yeah.
So we're, we're moving a lot of water when we do, but that's why.
How do you clarify it, like with that little pond that's going up, um, forty-one, the auto repair store, a shop there?
Yeah.
That little pond got sucked out a couple of years ago or something, and it was, how do you clarify that?
Not familiar with which pond you're talking about.
I forgot what the name of the auto repair place is, right on the hill on.
Oh, Doug Stevens, sure.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so, yeah, that'll draw that, at, at times, if it's dry, I mean, he, he has, uh, an overflow there sometimes, but sometimes it does.
But you guys actually pumped it out.
Oh, yeah.
Years ago, how do you clarify that slime?
Oh, how do we get it through the truck?
Yeah, how do you get it?
Well, you try, you, you try not to get to the point where you drag any soil or rocks through the pond.
But so the content of the water being slimy and alky by and all that doesn't matter?
Is silky.
Okay.
We, we did, uh, years ago, um, insurance-wise, we stopped doing swimming pool. Delivering water for that reason, because it couldn't, couldn't, the, the insurance, MMA basically said, look, that's. We don't want you doing it, so we stopped doing swimming pools.
Wow.
Cause we used to always do it, and a lot of times you might get a hundred dollar donation and buy a piece of a.
Yeah.
Those days are gone. Uh, we did, uh, recently, we pumped one out for somebody as, as a, um, as a training, cause I was like, well, it's coming out, so I'm going, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Um, and we used it as a pump train, so, um. So that's, you know, I don't know how you wanna handle this overage. I didn't not do the repair under the grounds that it's a safety, piece of safety equipment, and I didn't want the liability for us.
So let it come in, then we'll, we'll have to deal with it.
And, and then, um, you know, I'm in hopes that we'll, we'll be clear after that, with no more unexpected things, but. It was, it was, uh, meters did tell us that it was good that we brought it when we did, because if the truck had run for any length of time, it would've blown the entire engine, so. Um, it's, it's, I don't know a lot about engines, to be, um, clear on it, but the, um. The first, uh, the first one, they did a sleeve, um, did I get through that one better? So they did a sleeve, they replaced number six injectors, replaced injector cup. Found in, found number five cylinder, uh, valve guide was worn, and truck needs a new cylinder head. Then they went to, on this other one, replaced the cylinder head with new cylinder head from Cat, cause they brought in a rep from Cat. Sleeve that, doing all, all new head bolts. Um, manifold, turbo studs, gaskets, O-rings, refill with new coolant and an oil change that they recommended and all of those things. And that's what, you know, for that, so.
Do you want me to then submit that next?
Um, yeah, if you want to, that one, at least that one will get paid for, and then I don't wanna pay this until we get. Some good inquiries.
Yeah, it's gonna be two weeks.
Yeah, that's, and that'll be good. And, and so we probably saw, and speaking of the paging.
Yeah, we got that.
So it came out very good, and they'll line it next week as part of that contract.
Awesome.
So, and he donated that five thousand dollars worth of work, so, to keep us in budget, so.
Good.
It's.
Very kind.
I have one question for you.
Absolutely.
Uh, Wednesday, would you have some time for me? I need to go through your safety procedures.
Mm-hmm.
And figure out where they are so that when MMA comes in, I can bring them in and show them.
Yeah, yeah, and I can get your key to get you into the door, um, to get those things. Um, so, yeah, we haven't had a locksmith redoing doors, um.
Oh, sorry.
So, but I'll get.
It's a key block now?
The outside door is still a combination.
Oh.
And we can talk about that.
Yeah, don't worry.
And then, uh, and then the inside is still key, wanna give that, so.
Can you put on your message board that Matrix will be in town on September nineteenth?
Okay.
So, Matrix Trucks will be in town, um, working on whole inventory.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I can get that on there, safety related, so that's good.
Right, that's right, I think it.
Yep, absolutely, um, so I think we're still on for Wednesday. Um, I was kinda hoping to do a group picture, but that's okay.
Okay, yeah.
We'll just do a fire and rescue separated, um.
Yeah.
And then Wednesday, Bob, if you wanna come down, I'll be there around six-ish, we're doing photos, and then we're gonna do our, um, our. Training that night, cause we moved ahead one night, hoping that we get on a rescue night, so.
Bummer. So close, yes, so sorry.
So I think that's all I have for you, uh, we are working on still getting a price from a carpenter to repair the railing.
Yep.
But if I don't get anything or any headway on that, um, I may just utilize what carpentry knowledge we have and.
The emergency steps.
Stabilize the railing and such, make it safe, so.
That sounds great, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
See you Wednesday.
Yes, thank you.
Clarified, and, and, and it's probably just me, but the, um, the broadband meeting for. Was that on September twenty-second? October.
Yeah.
But there's a grant, there's a grant meeting on the. But there's a grant, there's a grant meeting on the twenty-third of September. Um, I think the grant.
The grant, so the uh. Let's see, it's the main municipal, not, not main municipal, the main connectivity authority.
Right.
Will provide the rules for the next round of grant funding.
Okay. Meeting, was it already established that a budget was, was um established to begin paying for these?
No.
Okay, so who's paying for Matrix coming in?
We have, we, they, the um town meeting authorized a select man. Enter into agreement with a cable company.
Okay.
And so now, and they allowed us to use upper funds.
The American Recovery.
Yep, the.
Federal.
Yeah, American Recovery Funds.
Okay.
Uh, we got two installments, one was eighty-seven thousand, the other one was about eighty-seven thousand. And both of those were put towards uh broadband, so that's what they're spending now.
Um, and, and when the town decided to use a, a, a taxation method as opposed to a fee or a um, a bond sort of thing?
That'll be.
Okay, so that's not decided until November.
Correct.
Yeah, once we have all of the numbers as close to final as possible, then that's what the uh. The Dallas Initiative will be for each person in the community to have an option to say yea or nay.
Because that's authorizing to go for it, once we know how much the grant is, but that, that will impact the tax rate.
Okay, it's a little affected, so.
So more people.
I'm just trying to understand every time that there's a bond that is uh, is, is adopted by the town, that it's automatically transferred to taxation base?
That's the only way we have to get money.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I'm just, you know, yeah. You know, it's a, it's a short-term education here on a long curve, so.
And what they're saying, twenty-five percent is what town will be paying.
Okay.
So at that point before November, we'll know how much.
Okay, so they're going to be in town basically just to assess and survey their areas.
Look at every one of the telephone poles in that certain small market.
Okay.
They're, they, they basically put, get a. For it, identify where the wires that are on the pole now are, uh, determine whether.
They can't get this information from any.
No, what you look at is on a tel- a power pole.
Right.
The top wire.
Right.
The next one down is the cable.
Yeah.
And the next one down is telephone.
Right.
So what they have to do is make sure that they have that territory set.
Okay.
Yeah, some poles have power and telephone, some have.
Like Lake Hill only has phone line down one section of it, for instance.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they have no cable on.
Yeah, no.
Like it was major road in town and no cable.
Yeah, well, okay.
It is, it's a major travel road.
Yeah, no, it is. Um, okay, so they can't actually glean any of their GPS coordinates from, from uh San Pedro. They don't really need that per se, and they're just looking for the uh population on the pole.
They're looking to make sure that each of the poles is capable of having another wire put up there.
Right.
They also have to look at the poles on the property, personal property too, not just the one on the road. There's some poles that actually go.
Actually in on people's drives, sure, yeah.
Right, like you have several poles going there.
Interesting. Okay, so um everything is taking like this, this, we use grant meeting and everything that's all taken.
Well, there's going to be other meetings where the broadband committee will be talking to the committee. For example, there's going to be uh several weeks where. The committee is going to be at the transfer station to answer questions people might have.
I see. I would.
But when are they going to do that?
I, I believe it's going to be the next few weeks coming up. I don't have specific dates.
So that's on Saturdays and Sundays?
Right. Some, there'll be a couple of people posts who will.
Okay, and this was what he was talking about, about having meeting materials to be able to hear that and that sort of thing.
Okay, safety.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bail out. Thank you so very much for all of your.
Have a good night.
Thank you, work crews, real quick. Um, Thursday, we have uh two meetings. I'll go to the transfer station with um an M O A risk management person. And they will look at railings at the uh dumpsters.
Hmm, great.
Chains are.
Yeah.
And make proposals.
Great.
So I'll also have a look at that shed wall is here.
Awesome.
Okay, that's Thursday at ten. Okay, okay, Lee asked if uh, the, all that work you did carry on FEMA. Come up with all those things, with that. Uh, key in money coming from FEMA, eighty thousand dollars, Lee said, did we receive money? Were we supposed to?
Because I still have to get with Naomi.
Oh.
Because we were scheduled and then.
Oh, right.
The, the Federals bailed and.
Yeah.
Have been trying to reset, so they, they haven't closed it out yet.
Oh my goodness.
Fast-moving.
Okay, we have, the town has a debit card, the town has a debit card?
Yes.
Do we get a monthly statement?
Yes, we have a separate account. It's a separate bank account that I have to fund, so all of the. IONUS and those things, um.
Yeah.
Or when I order from Amazon for different departments, I use the debit card, but the debit card is the only thing that goes in and out of that bank.
Yep.
And the only money that goes in there is when I fund it, so if somebody's making a big purchase, like um when Paul was making purchase of the. Cameras or something, he'd tell me and I'd make sure that was funded in there.
Okay, we should see that statement then every month.
It's, yeah, it's in with all the other bank statements, so, yeah, but I can give it to you each month to one.
Okay, oh.
I think everyone wants to see it. I have no problem.
Oh, the other one is, um, okay, you didn't give us a, a breakdown of the accounts this month. The balances of the account. Why don't you show on that the, I'm getting real nitpicky here.
No, that's fine.
Um, how much money we've received in taxes so far? We know how much Lincoln Walton sends in, how much excess tax, we, we see all of those things, but we don't know how much tax.
Because the tax, the tax commitment is actually the receivables, that's the income. And that's money that isn't collected yet, so we wouldn't be.
We have collected it.
No, we've only collected about, not even a third of it right now.
Yeah, but I'd like to know how much we've kept it, because I'm not buying like the generators and stuff like that, because I don't know how much. We have received so far. You know, I'm getting that.
Yeah, well, basically, we haven't received anything until just this past week.
So that's what I want to know.
Because taxes aren't due until September thirtieth, which is why I never put in the um donations until after September thirty.
Right, right.
Yeah.
But it, it would be just like, like to see that, so.
So would that be done on a bi-weekly basis then, or?
No, well, yeah, every other week she.
And I, I do have the budget, I just didn't print it out for you guys.
A shortage.
They should have brought, Paul brought up a little paper.
What a champion.
Hey, I, I brought in a ream, so they could do the, the B M V float out and all and not have tissue paper in their files.
Two reams for the week.
Is that an extra?
No, it's the only one I got printed out.
So you can print alone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Using precious sheets of paper.
It was rationally, that one it made to make cottons.
Oh, okay. Ordinance review committee is going to come in the next.
Oh, next time, okay.
I'll put them somewhere around seven-thirty or something like that, okay? Um, one thing we'll debate is how they want to structure going through the whole ordinance and just cleaning everything up.
Okay.
And the debate will be over how you number each section, so prepare yourselves.
And then it sounds like they have a lot of work to do to update our ordinances for the new state statutes. Yeah, okay.
So do you know that thing about section one, uh, is it A? Then section one A, one, section one A. Okay, versus what the committee likes?
Um, I think I know what both.
Okay.
Approaches are, yes.
Okay. Um.
The problem is making sure that somebody picks it up that knows how to carry on how the structure was utilized.
Right, right. I, I think it's much easier to read the way Alice did it.
Right, but if somebody doesn't know how to work the software to do that.
Right.
Like it's going to really screw up.
Right. Yes. Okay, you already answered the generator workers call. Oh, it's not workers call. It's just these stuff we have to post everywhere. These are all this. These are only the state ones that we have here. Aren't there federal ones too?
Covered by the state ones, because there's a, there's website which is B O L, which you can print them out for free.
Yeah, but isn't there federal ones that have to be posted too?
Trying to just picture the bulletin board at work, I feel like there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the one I have. Add work from work.
You know, the guy looks, you know, they're looking at every little thing, you know, this is what I went through last week. He's pro, guys. Yeah, that's all Louise, yeah, and coffee table.
The rest are state ones that have to give a minimum range.
Okay, so this covers them all. So where do we have to post them? Does we post them here? We have to post them at the transfer station, the library, community center? Do we have to post them everywhere?
I'm guessing in where their employees, right? So town office.
And I have to post them where all employees have access to, like, one of my clients actually posted it in my men's room. And that didn't cover it because.
Put in the Florida body at the transfer station?
That's generic, so yes, you could.
No, it just gets to be so.
Yeah.
I would say like town office, well, they're already up, transfer station, library, fire department.
And what.
Fire.
What you can do though. They did use to have it there, but the other thing that you can say is. That the transfer station people come up here to get their paycheck and the bulletin board's right there with all the posters.
All come up here, it's only the manager.
They could, they have access.
No, I don't mind posting them, I, it's just, I just.
Well, they're not going to stay because there's no real good inside place that they all go, they don't go all.
Well, no, but they had that little shack, so I could easily post it right there, but I better put them in a, yeah, plastic bag or something. Okay, that's, makes me happy. Um, okay, plowing roads, um. Brought up a point where, what was it? Oh, yeah, the Echo Lake Road. We didn't close a section of it last year that we should have, real short.
Right.
What about the old Rome Road? They don't plow that all the way, do they? They must just plow it to.
Just at fast wills to, do they even go up to the Christmas tree farm? I don't think.
I doubt it.
I'm not sure.
They must just go to Robinson's.
Yeah, I find it hard to mention they go further.
That needs to be done in journeys and road.
That's really developed quite well, though.
That probably doesn't get plowed all the way.
But don't you have houses all the way from your town?
Pokemon's probably the last, uh, the check will leave.
Mm-hmm.
Check. When would you guys like to start the town manager process?
Hmm.
I have a lot of people that would like to be on it, but they're all pro. We need to get people that are against it on there too. I had one that said from the transfer station yesterday that said he wouldn't mind being one of his events.
Um, I wonder if the governance committee has any thoughts about process?
Yeah, but they were all, I don't know, Heather might be against it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But Sue is for, which is not, Shereen is for, Paul is for, these are all people that were against it, so.
I think Clyde is against it.
Clyde, Clyde would be good. Yes. Yes, oh, yeah, we'll probably have to stop that fairly soon.
Yeah, I feel like one, yeah, I feel like maybe one first step is talking to the governance committee and seeing if they have any.
Yeah.
Process recommendations, maybe?
Yeah. That's, so.
Soon, yeah.
Okay, should be in next week. Uh, there's a planning board and appeals board workshop shooting right now when.
Coming up.
Yes. Whoa, shoot, I will email both Greg and. Scott, Eric.
Okay.
Scott was going to get the appeals board together and get a chair and uh. Move the alternate up to regular number, and then they would just need two alternate members.
Ken actually, somebody that is available, because I never had any correspondence with him.
Who's that?
I can't remember his last name.
He was on the planet.
He was, he was an alternate, but he never responded to any of the correspondence we sent.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know if he's still active or not.
Okay. That's a little bit. Okay, we covered the bridge, Castle Island. Oh, okay, um, I don't know if you guys saw this, MMA has a labor workshop.
Hmm.
On the twenty-fifth of October. Interested, I may go.
What is that for?
Uh, labor relations, stuff like handling what we did, possibly not quite the best way. Like, maybe this, so. Input. Um, I think it's all. If you have anything, oh, did you guys get the wellness thing?
Hmm.
That they sent us? It's just a big. It's a big document, it's, you know, these big companies have wellness things, you know, they send around.
This is MMA?
Yeah.
You're going to alter what, go the first thing.
Yeah.
Deep breath, never hurt anybody.
You have something, you, you really should use it. You're not going to use it, why have it, you know?
Great question.
You know, these other things like confined space entry that we have, these are all things that said, he said we had to have.
We need.
And we didn't have, but they're all in the fight of our, uh.
Oh.
Exposed control plan, respirator program, control hazardous lockout, tag out. Hazardous communication, those are all fight of our, I'll find them on Wednesday, and then I'll call the guy and say, come out. Right, that's the good thing.
Sorry.
Anything else from you guys? Anything else from you guys?
Um, I have a, I'll try to pull up, which is that soon. Um, we will need to have a public meeting to adopt the new G A.
It came out?
Well, they sent the new amounts, but they have not sent the sense, uh, new ordinance language. And we need to start using the new maximum starting October one. Even if we have not adopted them yet, which seems a little backwards, but uh, that is what they tell me in risk info glass.
Can we adopt them on the nineteenth? So that's a public hearing.
I think we can hope that the ordinance language is out. I guess worst case, we could try to adapt.
Oh, we don't have the, the ordinance language yet?
It was a higher max, but.
Higher max, but that's basic, um.
That's what all of a sudden, they don't change much, that's a new uh, criteria, right there?
Yeah, not.
So is that usually right in the body of the ordinance?
Yeah, basically. I mean, I guess worst case, we could use last years and just update it.
Why don't we set up, well, I'll put it down for a public hearing the first part of the, of the next meeting.
And you are going to do the state reports, right?
Yes. Moving up in the world.
You mentioned meeting on the nineteen.
Yeah, the twenty sixth. Thirteen, uh, yes, twenty sixth, sorry. Uh, we're gonna try to contact that lady at the TV con.
Yeah, we haven't gotten any response, haven't we?
I wanna talk to her, she said another thing out with a new name.
Oh, yes, Jeff, the second Jesse. Yes. Both from Connecticut.
August, though. Okay, the other thing is, and I. No, we don't have to make it, put an name on it. Uh, how do you do GoFundMe? Make a GoFundMe thing, you know the person I'm thinking of?
I might.
They won't, they can't go for G A. But we could start a GoFundMe. Right?
Personally, not as.
What's that?
You have to do it personally, not as a channel.
No, no, right, no, that's, no, that's what I was, yeah, no, we'd have to say a name at that point, but I, I think they both know who I'm talking about, and I think that would help. Any thoughts?
Unless you have somebody, this is my personal thing, unless you have somebody who can really write that catchy script of why the GoFundMe, you're not gonna get it.
Okay, so you need to have a sob story, well, we do, yeah.
That, that is willing to be published on a Facebook group.
But we better go to them first.
Because if you don't write it, that it's gonna hook people in. Because I, I've done a lot for dog rescues, unless you hook people in, you, you just get people who know that person.
Is this their friend, Paul, or is this a different?
No. No, this is, this just getting worse, what's happening is, uh, they can't come back to work for a while. It's gonna drag on.
Actually, Alice and Marion might be helpful in crafting the GoFundMe script.
Who's this?
Alice Olson and Marion Habib.
I wonder, yeah, if we would, if wanted to reach out to basically them through the Aging in Place Committee. And ask.
Because they're, they are both very eloquent with words.
You know, we don't have to raise like ten thousand dollars, you know, you know, that'll dollars would go would be you know, nice, and that would get them off of my back. Know what I mean?
Well, the other thing is, do they still do it because they know the store, you know, the store, we used to have a bucket where you cashed out.
Right, it's the same thing, right. Basically, yeah.
Do they still do that at all anymore if I want? But that might.
Yeah, very simple.
That might be worthwhile, if you could talk Matt into it.
Because we're gonna be doing. I don't mind, I actually like, because I've been talking to different people and getting different ideas, stuff like that.
Back when we had the bus, I used to, every third weekend, I'd go.
Yeah, and I used to drive the bus so with the.
We, we had a psychedelic painted bus that was the recycling. Recycling bus. And can. Julie was the one, the, the bus Nazi, she kept everything alive.
She preferred that I drive it, but I think every once in a while she would have to.
It was actually a drivable bus.
Oh, yeah, it was a school bus donated to us, and they painted it because it couldn't have the same color as a school bus. It's very comical, they, they would park the bus at the school, at the store. And we just throw our cardboard in it, which was good, because we were the major funder of cardboard, and then I would drive it down, park it at the dump, and we'd fill it. Okay. I am done. So do I have a, we didn't, we only made one motion the whole night? My rules that we. So Ms. Bass, is, is she a K J reporter?
All right, good night, everybody.